Oh, man. The meeting of the Planning Board Borough Somerville for October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided. That a copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, two mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier News, and three given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Members Andrea Dare.
Here.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens is excused this evening. Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Crasker.
Here.
John Manilio.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember Vroom, I assume he's running late. Acting Chairperson Warner.
Here. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from executive session, October twenty-third?
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Approval of minutes from regular session, October twenty-third?
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Yes. We need to put through amended resolution for three eighty-two East Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
John Manilio.
I don't believe I'm eligible for it.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Next, we have the award of fair open contract for professional planning services for the affordable housing, affordable housing planning to Colan Associates.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Yes. And then now we have a ward of contract for professional legal services for affordable housing to Renone Coughlin and Minchelio.
So moved. Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, and that brings us to our discussion items. The tree ordinance, which is on the agenda, we are going to push out for further discussion. We're still waiting for some legal interpretation. Mike, let's go right into the checklist for compliance.
Yes, Kevin brought this up. The checklist hasn't been revised in over twenty years. It predates me, and there's some items on it. One of them is thirteen copies, which may or may not be applicable, how the Board sees it for every application. The paper that the, when I'm saying thirteen copies, when it's deemed complete, the applicant, within usually ten days out, supplies thirteen copies for every board member and for the professionals. Kevin has suggested that that might want to be modified to maybe go PDF a little bit on that, but there's other checklist, like there's a requirement, there's a missing title block on the checklist for the board engineer. So I would like to take a more picture, bigger picture of the checklist if the Board want. Kevin has a really good point, and he points out that it's late in the year, very late in the year, so if we're going to make changes, I think it has to be done by the recommendation by the next meeting. I think that's correct.
Yeah, so the governing body has to do it by ordinance from a recommendation from the Planning Board. One of the main issues, I've been working in that office for about a month now, and I do notice a lot of volume of paper. To submit fourteen sets of plans for review by the, by the Board is, is extensive, in my opinion. Many of you using your personal computers right now. The governing body has authorized and acquired and procured already laptops that will be on the dais for, for the Boards, for the Council, and so forth. So it could be as easy as bringing your own flash drive, or if you wanted to pull it up on an email, it'll be that. And our goal is to do that next year in, in transition. You know, no one's going to be forced to move in a direction that we don't want them to, to be comfortable with, but that's the goal. But obviously, talking to Mike with the checklist not being updated in twenty years, there's probably various areas that could be improved that would assist the staff in, in processing applications.
For example, a PDF of the whole application technically is not on the checklist, but it's great to have a PDF for the files in the checklist, so that a PDF is provided.
So timeline-wise, to get this done, we have to send it up to Council at the next meeting? We would have to approve it to send to Council? I'm just looking, could we get for the next meeting then? Can we get the recommendations from you, Mike, with changes from over the last twenty years?
The stuff I've noticed in twenty years and throw it up to the Board for the next meeting, and the Board likes, if I say nine items, the Board says seven, then those sevens would go to the recommendation.
I think that's fair.
And that's, time-wise, that's fine?
Yeah, so technically, the governing body could introduce that ordinance by title, right? So the necessarily details of the text don't necessarily be there, so probably the second meeting in November, the governing body could certainly introduce an ordinance. By then, the recommendations will be made, and then the governing body in their second meeting in December could adopt that, and it would cover. If for some reason that didn't happen, the ordinance cannot go over the calendar year, so we'd have to start all over next year.
And it would have to come here in the middle, so we just have to make sure we had an intro, a council, back to the Planning Board, review, recommendation consistency, and then back to you, I guess.
Which is why you're saying the second meeting in December is when the final, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we can kind of work backwards adopting it in the second, the Council could adopt in the second meeting of December, so we can kind of work backwards on the timeline on that.
So if it's doable to get that for next?
Is everybody okay with getting rid of the, the very large sets of plans?
I think they should have one set at least that you can review at.
Well, what we could do is show the Board, eleven-by-seventeens.
Yeah.
For the Board to use.
Reduce size.
Unless there's a major application, and we can put some language, they need the bigger plans.
I don't on my computer, so I don't.
Well, I.
Having one or two here to share.
That's what I was gonna go with.
What happens if she brings hers and I bring mine, we can't have all three of them.
That's what I was thinking is maybe we, you know, do the compromise where larger applications, you know, some of those where it is a pretty stat, and you really need the bigger ones, you know, having that option on the checklist where, you know, if needed, we'll provide to the Planning Board for that, you know, meeting.
Actually, I like that, if needed, if requested.
It's not a mandatory, but if we.
On request.
Yeah.
I support all that, but I'm, I just want to go on record, I'm completely fine with full virtual digital copies.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I was just gonna say from my experience, you know, I've seen in the past in other towns, other cities, typically, it's just a couple hard copies of the full size, so like two or four, one for the Board Secretary to show any public that comes in, one for the files, and then, you know, the rest are eleven-by-seventeen or reduced-size copies, and then obviously the PDF. And then going back to the point about larger applications, I think the catch-all there is some other towns and municipalities have put any other items that may be requested by the Board Professionals, and then at that point, the Board Secretary or Professional could ask for it.
Yeah, that's the cover all.
Yeah, we could say if required.
Yeah.
And make it on a case-by-case, but put it right in the checklist, it says that, if required.
I'm good, and I think it is time. Twenty years is a long time. A lot has changed, and I think it's definitely time to update it.
Catch up.
And it's easier to store for your files, too, for the, for the borough itself, it's saved perpetually. You don't have to have a hard files and.
Easy to look back up.
Yeah.
And that is, that's certainly precipitating that, because we have no space left. So that's certainly one of the major reasons, but it, it's just voluminous in the amount of paperwork. So, you know, I understand the value of paper, and I understand it's easy to work with, but like a lot of other things is.
Why are you looking at me when you say that?
No, I'm not. So, you know, it is a type of situation where people get, will get comfortable, more comfortable with the electronic system, and, and eventually, over a period of time, it'll be the way you're used to doing business. Now, Mayor, I'm, I'm not, I'm not super electronic either, but, but, you know, we really don't have space and.
Eleven-seventeens would work fine for me.
Yeah.
Right.
Inches, right? Eleven by seventeen.
Thank you.
All right. So you'll prepare some of that, get it to us prior to that next meeting, so that we can have a little bit of time to look at it, and then, even if it's a few days, but.
Typically, it'd be the, the closest window would be the Friday before Wednesday. I'll get it out. Typically, it's the Wednesday, but we'll see how the calendar goes, but sometime the week before, the Board.
Yeah, I think even if it's a day.
Yeah, it's not a big document to look at.
For us to take a look at it, so it's not brand-new in the meeting, because we do want to put, make sure it gets through at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay.
We don't want to skip calendar.
Yeah. All right, so next up is our fence ordinance.
Thank you. You have three documents here. One is the corner, which has the diagram that was requested. This is the reduction from fifty feet to twenty-five feet on the site triangle, so you have.
Chair, if, if Michael's gonna do most of the talking, can we have him just move over one seat? Because then I'll be able to screen him.
Is the TV not seeing him?
Well, what, I, I can't get him because the TV's actually blocking him.
Okay.
If, if he's gonna do most of the talking, I just felt that might be easier.
I'd like to switch to that seat.
Actually, I want Kara's seat.
Run over one.
Is that better?
Is that better?
There we go.
There we go.
All right.
Easy on the zoom.
It's all pre-programmed.
The physical observations is the one with the drawing. The Board requested the drawing on that language, because I agree that the drawing can really clarify what's going on, so we beat that one to death. And then, the other one was the, basically, the conditional use on the fences, and all it does is give flexibility. All of this is flexibility. If the ARB makes a recommendation to the Planning Board, the applicant can go, the Planning Board can review the ARB's recommendation, agree with it, disagree, the ARB, the applicants here and the Planning Board disagrees, it meets the conditions, then it has to go to the Board of Adjustment. We had talked about the checklist being revised to clarify that this is part of the thirty-five-dollar fee, so that, we, you know, that was one of the Mayor's concerns, that this was.
People who live on a corner.
Financial burdens on.
They're not penalized for living on a corner.
Right. So the language here would take care of the conditional uses and the flexibility. It came up that were, to work it this way, the ARB would have to report back to the Planning Board, which it appears, and that's what this ordinance was. I pulled the ordinance up that was, I guess, done last year or the year before, and.
And which one is that, just for the record?
This is the ordinance twenty-seven oh-four dash twenty-three dash zero four zero three. This ordinance was revised the ARB to essentially report to the zoning officer, but what we had talked about, the Planning Board had talked about, was having the ARB report back to the Planning Board on matters regarding SID, the signs, and so forth. So it might be as easy as just changing the language, the strike-through. You see, well, the ordinance shows the existing language. It could be as simple as just going back to the existing language, as opposed to reinventing the wheel. I don't know how everyone feels about that, but you have a copy of the ordinance, and of course, this would be a recommendation to Council.
And I think the only other change there was right now, at least the way I'm reading it, the ARB is only within the SID.
Correct.
So would we have to then apply it across the Board to all fences within the borough?
Right.
Do we, do we want to even just say throughout the borough, in case something else comes?
Yeah, because we, we have had applications outside of the SID where they were subject to ARB review and approval.
Yeah, so let's make that clear, if that's what we're ultimately seeking.
I think we just say throughout the borough.
Right, yeah, I think that's great.
So what's the criteria for it to come to the, to the ARB if it's not in the SID?
It would be the, this Board. If we have an application and they're looking for variances, and one of those stipulations is that they have to bring something back to the, to the, not enough to come back here, but the ARB can review it, and they agree to that, that's when the ARB will review, and then make a referral back to here.
Gotcha. But it doesn't start by going into the ARB if it's outside this?
No, and we've actually used it for redevelopment areas outside of the SID already, so it cleans it up.
The way it used to be is the ARB writes recommendations, and the Board here can either agree with the ARB or kick it around and kick it back to the ARB if something, the Board doesn't agree with something. In this case, it'd be the fences. If the ARB said this is, meets the conditions and the Board agrees, it's, that's over, it's done, the Planning Board would just approve it just like any other application.
And if the SID said, no, or I'm sorry, the ARB said it, like, keeping the fence issue, the ARB says it does not meet the conditions, the appeal is here or zoning.
It would go to the Planning Board first.
First, and then the Planning Board.
The applicant could say, I think the ARB is incorrect in their interpretation, and then the Planning Board would thoroughly vet this, because technically, encouraged, it's your call on this, but the ARB is just making the recommendations, they don't prove anything.
Advisory body.
Advisory body, the power is the Planning Board, so if the applicant did not, the ARB didn't agree with the ARB's recommendation, they could take the application right to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board would make the determination whether it meets the conditions.
So, so I guess my question is, is, and that makes a lot of sense, if the ARB says, and again, whether it's a fence, well, I'm just thinking the signs that we've been doing recently. If the ARB looks at it and says, yeah, this is compliant, I think recently, it's just been going, like, that's the end.
No, then it would now go back to the old way, where it comes back here with those recommendations, and we all review it, and then formally put it on record that it's been approved.
Yeah, just for clarification, the Professionals don't see that, it's putting your hand out to look at the ARBs, so it's not a financial issue. The Board would weigh on whether, like, for a sign, the aesthetics, it, it meets. If it doesn't meet, in the past, on signs, if the Board had concerns, you kicked it back to the ARB, stating the concerns. It's too large, or it's too bright, or something to that extent, and then the ARB would work with the applicant to revise it, then kick it back to the Planning Board.
Do we want to take the opportunity, unless I'm missing it, I don't see anywhere in here where it states who is on the Architectural Review Board. We were talking about making some changes.
We want to change that.
Residential component.
Because of doing out, because of the fencing, we wanted to add.
Yeah.
So are we keeping it, or does it make sense to do two separate ARBs?
Nah, it should be the same. It's just one.
So we're still keeping somebody from the SID on the one doing the outside, like, if it's a fence at the Mayor's house? Again, I'm just checking if that's.
I'm getting picked on tonight.
It's the tie.
Yeah, I know.
It sounds like it would be a good idea in general to have a member of the public public.
That would be the resident.
Who's not a businessman.
That's what we said here. To the extent possible, the ARB shall include a resident of the borough that is not affiliated with the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, or Downtown Somerville Alliance. It's, it's in here, to, to the extent possible, because the comment was, you might not find someone who's willing to do that on every application. So we can clarify that language, but it is under, on page two, you'll see in that, the paragraph, the third paragraph from the bottom, it, it talks about the makeup of the ARB.
I'm not seeing it.
All applicants proposed to use the above stated conditional use standards shall be reviewed by the ARB, and members of the ARB shall be residents of the borough. To the extent possible, the ARB shall include a resident of the borough that is not affiliated with the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board of Downtown Somerville Alliance.
Missing a page.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and I don't know.
What subsection?
But you, what you read is what I was looking for, which is what I couldn't find.
I'll pass mine out, I'm sorry, I. It's, it's, there's two pages to this document.
The other one.
Corner lot, I mean, that's.
Oh, it's under the corner lot one, not the, not the ordinance one.
The other one.
There we go, okay.
All right, so I'm not missing it.
You're not missing it.
I was with you, Lisa.
There it is.
As I recall, the Board liked the idea of having a resident review these.
But I think that needs to go into the, don't you think this, it should be in this also? Not just in something for fences?
Well, that's a good question. You're, we're gonna amend the ordinance back to ARB. You're suggesting that the ARB language we put in there to open up to the whole borough were applicable?
Yes.
And to put the resident to, to the extent possible?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a question?
Take the opportunity to do that.
I just have one que, and maybe I'm dense tonight, I don't know, but it's saying that the, all applications proposing to use, members of the ARB shall be residents of the borough, which I understand, but not just residents will be on that Board, right? I'm, I'm thinking that you'll have somebody from, like, the Planning Board and.
Yeah, it's the, somebody from planning, zoning, SID.
Yeah, it says that, yeah.
I'm missing that.
The concern was.
And that's where I think it can be clarified in here.
Would be clarified, because the concern was that right now, the ARB representative isn't, is a borough resident, but technically, that's not always going to be the case. So the, the clarification was to make sure that there was a resident, at least one, on to review this.
And then, the current process is it's going to the zoning officer. It's obviously gonna come back to this Board, so we just, I want to make sure that that process is clean, not waiting for meetings, you know what I'm saying? We still need to be able to meet the other way, so.
Right now, the ARB meets ad hoc.
Yep.
Via email, and they all review it, typically not in person, but via email, I think sometimes in person, but it gets done very quickly, in my experience, from dealing with that.
So in the past, it was, I think, from what I can remember, I'm getting old, so I might be wrong. It's been a while, but I thought the Board Secretary was the one that sent it out to the ARB members, and then we, we used to try to come up with a date to meet, then we moved virtually, which made it much easier. So I think that's, I'm not saying that has to be in here, but I do want to make sure that that gets clarified on what that procedure is.
Correct.
Once those, because that, the last thing we want is all of a sudden, it gets lost in the shuffle, and it's not.
Isn't that coming from the zoning officer now?
I, I don't know, that's my point.
Yeah, we, we made a, a procedural change in the municipal building, and, and what happened was, we, we had transferred it from, I guess, I guess, at the time, Tony Walton was probably putting it together, and then we transitioned that to John Micali as the zoning officer, and it's been since transitioned to Navaline, and she would continue to do that coordination as well.
Okay, that's my question, is I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, on the coordination side.
And if the Board likes to, just to bridge the issue of the fees, I like to put a sentence in here saying the fees in the, in this ordinance, so the, so that the fee ordinance doesn't.
Get lost.
Lag way behind, and then we have this crack, well, the fees don't say that. If we, I like to add a sentence or two in here saying that the fees for this process will be the zoning permit, whatever that, I won't give a number, just saying it'll be, this will be handled as under the application fees for a zoning permit. Therefore, it's clear.
Unless it's denied.
Well, once it's denied, but even if it's denied, we had talked about, and they wanted to go to the Board of Adjustment to keep the cost down on that, Jason. That was the.
On the fence one.
On the fence, I'm talking about the fence.
Not, not on all ARB.
The concern was, if it doesn't meet the conditions and it has to go to the Board of Adjustment, it's still financially burdensome on a property owner. If I understand this right, so.
For the fence, I just wanted to make sure we're talking just the fence, not the change in the ARB.
So if, you know, I, I, it's really carries, carries though, we come up with language, a sentence or two about the fees, just, I'm trying to get that, because we're running out of time in the year, and I'd rather not look at the whole fees right now.
No, I agree.
At the end of the year, as opposed, but I want to address the concerns of that in this.
And it gives you that flexibility to change the fee schedule whenever.
And not have to.
You don't give a number.
Be in accordance with this fee.
Right.
So whenever that changes, it changes.
Yeah, I, I guess my only question with it, and I'm fine with everything, we can, you know, make the recommendation, I won't vote against it or anything, is if, if it all, going back with the signs now, the fence, we're saying, I kind of think the fence is a little more intricate, but the signage and stuff, if, if the ARB and the zoning official agree that it's a conforming, does it need to come back to us?
Yes, yeah.
If it's within the SID, yes.
If it's within the SID but not outside the SID.
Well, no, that's not true, because it's a redevelopment, and we've dictated it.
If, if it's a, if it's a.
Condition of approval.
Correct. If it's a part of the condition of the Planning Board approval, then they have to go.
Okay.
And just it's a recommendation that then the Board would adopt.
Yeah, and, because I remember we used to.
Three seconds, like, yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just as clarity, so if it's, what you're saying is that if it's a conforming sign, and it's outside the SID, where they would normally just come in for a sign permit, they would still have to come, go to the Planning Board?
No.
No, okay.
Only if that was part of an original condition that we already seen that applicant.
In the resolution, okay.
That's, I didn't want.
They won't give you guys a signage plan, and they'd say that the sign would be in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. That would, and then we would say that would go to the, the ARB. ARB would review it, make the recommendation that it is, we would then adopt it. Unless it's there, SID or redevelopment, we don't have to deal with it. That would be any other zoning permit.
And then the fee associated, what Mike was speaking about is, so right now, right now, an applicant does pay an ARB fee, right, to go to the ARB. I think it's twenty-five dollars or something like that. I'm not sure what it is. And, and so that fee would include it coming back to the Planning Board? And is the applicant expected to be here or no?
No, they were never here in the past, and I don't foresee, unless somebody else disagrees, I don't see that changing. We would just see the recommendation and go from there, is it?
Okay. So the fee that they currently pay for the RB would be the fee.
Correct.
I was thinking, it needs a zoning approval, and the zoning approval has a fee, a zoning application. I was just saying.
Twenty-five dollars.
Right. So to keep the fees down, just say, the zoning approval fee is the only thing.
So no ARB fee?
No, ARB is what I'm suggesting. That just, look, I'm saying that the zoning officer has to review this, because it's a land use, it's a fence, so that, there's a fee right there. Use that fee for the whole process, if.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
So we get rid of the ARB fee and just use the zoning.
Right, correct.
All right, so just to kind of clarify, make sure everyone's on the same page. So, application for, I'm, I'm just gonna stick with the fences right now, because I think that's what we're changing a little bit. Application for a fence pursuant to the conditional use goes to the ARB, goes, zoning permit application submitted to the ARB. ARB says, yes, it complies with all the conditions, comes to the Planning Board, Planning Board either says, yes, we agree, no, we don't agree. If we don't agree, they go to the zoning Board, all under that same fee.
Correct.
Or the Planning Board kicks it back to the ARB and says, if you change X, Y, and Z, we found it to comply. So the applicant would have that option.
So there's three options.
Right.
Approve it, say it has to go to the zoning Board, or it would meet if it had these revisions. But again, all encompassed under that one fee.
My experience is that the, the Planning Board has a concern with something. It typically weighs into how to correct that, or what the concern is, and sends it back, as opposed, yes, they have it, obviously have the choice of going to the Board of Adjustment, but it's a lot less fraudulent if they just say, okay, these, take the picket fence, lower it six inches or something. They say, oh, we can do that, boom.
Are we gonna get revised drafts of this? Just take one more look at it and.
I think we can send it up to the Council with those.
On, on the signage, and I, and thank you for letting me speak, by the way, is, is on the signage, would there be also a timeline between the ARB, just in case there's no, I don't know, Planning Board meeting gets canceled? Would there be a timeline where if it's not heard by the Planning Board, that it's automatically approved, if they, after the ARB approved it, so like thirty days afterwards? If the Planning Board did not hear it after the ARB approved it, would it get automatically approved? Because that, that was really, really the premise that caused this thing to start with.
Well, what I will say is that, since we've updated the, the agenda, we're, we're keeping items on here, so there, there may, there's always gonna be something to talk about, so I think the cancellation of meetings will be few and far between, if any, because, especially in the next year or two. Because, especially in the next year or two, there's, there's a whole lot of activity going on. So, I, I, I understand the concern because you don't want to delay commerce, but I, I think the, the folks that will be appointed to the ARB and, um, and this board understand, we have, especially at Borough Hall, we have to keep it moving because what's one of the big complaints we get, you know, the, the slow pace of government is holding me up. I can't get my sign up. It's been, you know, sometimes it's three days and sometimes it's forty-five days. And how do we keep that compressed? So, that, that compression comes from making sure that we, you know, even if it's a one-issue meeting, we come in, we approve it, and we move on.
And I know way back in the past, that was one of the things, especially if there was an ARB application or anything, we would just come in just to make sure that it wasn't delayed. So, I don't foresee that changing, like you said.
I don't think we should ever have an automatic approval if we have timing mistakes.
No, I think.
I think the recommendation would then go back to the zoning office, not just automatic approval.
Right, well, that's what it was. So, then what was, what was changed was that the sign approvals would go to the ARB. The ARB would, as long as it was conforming, would make their recommendation to the zoning official, and then the zoning official would allow it. So, it, it didn't come back here because it went to the zoning official if it was conforming. That was the way that we, that was the change that we had made.
Just our curiosity, and again, going way back now, why, why are we reviewing conforming signs?
To confirm they're conforming.
Aesthetics.
Well, aesthetics, it does.
Just, just for the aesthetics of it.
Well, that's, that's the intent of the ARB because it was crafted initially under the SID. Special Improvement District for people who don't understand what the SID means, we're throwing acronyms around. So, the ARB is the Architectural Review Board. Their role was to help ensure that the character of Main Street doesn't become, it doesn't start to look like Seaside Heights, the boardwalk, uh, which it can very quickly. And, and we've actually begun to address some things already that, that, that we're going afoul of what our ordinance states it should be. So, it, it really, and, and it's worked very well. Over the last twenty years, it's created a very distinctive downtown atmosphere. And one of the things you want to do is to make sure that you maintain that.
Yeah, I, I meant more outside, like if they had a fence that was conforming, why would it need to come to the ARB?
They, they.
So, with, with these, any of these corner lot ones, if it's conforming, it would just go straight through, it would never go to the ARB?
Correct.
As long as it's meeting most of these?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Right, the only time it would come to us would be for a variance.
Yes.
Yep.
And again, that's what I was just saying, with the signs outside of the SID, they come even though they don't need a variance because it's a conforming sign and it's coming to us. So, I wanted to make sure we're not getting into some situation where it's, we don't like the type of fence, it's, you know, oh, I don't like the cut, I want it to be a straight, or, you know, getting into people's property with.
If you look on Main Street, there's very few or no box signs.
Yeah, yeah.
Reason for, for that, even they conform, is the aesthetics of a box sign was, was always been discouraged by this board to have a unique sign. So, even if it conforms, the reason the ARB, I mean, this planning board looks at it, is for something like that.
And I was more concerned when we were talking with the fencing and everything, we're not going into a person's property and saying, no, no, I don't like this. It's conforming, but we don't really like the way you're doing it.
No, and, and that's what I'm saying with the signs. So, with our signs and conforming, are we changing then? Because we, the, the council changed it and, and the planning board weighed in la, on May of twenty-three to change it so that if it was conforming, we had faith in the ARB, the ARB said, yes, it is, kicked it to the zoning officer, and the zoning officer signed off on it, rather than going from the ARB to the planning board to the zoning officer. So, are we adding that step back in?
To come back here, yes.
Yes.
The, because the, the reality is, they, they don't have the ability to approve that. The only governing body that has the ability to approve that is here. So, so it has to come back here for, and even if it's a tacit approval, it's just putting the stamp of the planning board on that approval. The ARB doesn't have that approval authority.
I know they don't, that's why I went to the zoning officer.
Yeah.
So, the zoning officer has the, and once it goes through and the ARB says, yeah, it meets all the standards and guidelines, it was passed and could, could just keep the ball rolling.
Yeah, that, that, I, I can tell you for twenty-five years, when, since that was implemented, that, I think the reason it changed is because there was a slowdown, that's my, that's my understanding, that there was a slowdown in the approvals. And that store owners were complaining because they couldn't get approvals out of either the ARB or the planning board or the zoning officer. So, you know, the, the idea here is, we, we bring it back to what it was, streamline the operation, little cost. Well, actually, it's just the, the standard cost for a sign application, and it comes back here for that ultimate approval. And, and I can tell you, in, in the, the years that I've been sitting on this board, I think there were maybe three or four signs that we didn't approve. But it was warranted, and, and, you know, the ARB had made a recommendation that be approved, it came back here, and we said, no, we're not putting that up on Main Street, it's not gonna happen. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a process that it may extend it. It should extend it only maximum by two weeks, maximum, or three if we've got an oddball month. That's it.
It's come, I think it's coming back here because it was working before and the adjustments that were made allowed things to go through that maybe should have come back here for approval. They were insistent on, oh, it's gotta be streamlined, blah, 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 and we did all that. And now we're bringing it back, it's a full circle thing. We're doing it here because we need to have oversight. They don't have the approval or the authority to approve, we're oversight. So, I think that this is the way to do it, bring it back.
Yeah, and, and the counter to that is that, that, you know, at some point, you have to give this, this governing body the ability to approve these types of, uh, things. And it may be simple, it may be a simple sign, but the authority rests here. It doesn't rest with the zoning officer.
From, from what I can remember too, when the ARB was originally implemented, it was an extension of the planning board, it was not its own thing. So, the authority really wasn't with the zoning officer, it was with the ARB. When the ordinance got changed, it moved that authority without, in my opinion, the authority to do so. Because it really was, the ARB was supposed to be this extension of us to streamline items that really were, um, whether it was in keeping with historical nature of something or the design element of something. Like, when you look at that original little book from the ARB, it was very clear, it was not just about conforming. It was more about visual, um, aesthetics to make sure that it, you know, it went with the style of Main Street in that SID district. So, I think that was part of what, where I felt like it was, it's not just a matter about as simple as, as saying, well, it conforms. Because it might conform to the signage regulations, but does it conform to what we, our expectations from the planning board as it relates to the SID?
I, I, like I said, I've, I've just asking the question because I know we made the change. Um, I know that when I, I mean, I, I've, obviously I have not been on the planning board for as long as all of you have. When, when we looked at signs previously, it was, looked at it and approved it. I don't remember there being any discussions previously because the ARB was the gatekeeper.
Yep.
So, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. As long as we can, if we can keep up the pace and we can not slow things down, I think that's great. I know that, again, there was a gridlock and there were some businesses and, to the mayor's point, that were saying that it was taking a month, two months to get these approvals. So, as long as we're gonna be on top of it, I think that's great.
Good.
Any other comments, questions about that? So, you will have something?
So, I would say we should have a vote authorizing when to send the recommendations.
Directly to them?
Directly, correct.
Recommendations, Karis helped, writing the language on the fee, and we talked about, and opening up the ARB, where the whole borough, where appropriate, the language we had talked about. And the, and hopefully that fee saying it'll be a zoning for the fences, it'll be a zoning application fee, you'll put it right in there. And then hopefully next year, we can look at the land use ordinance in a more big picture point of view.
Correct, I think we.
The draft ordinances, and then we'll see it again.
Yeah.
And we're also gonna need to make a motion, I think, for the fence ordinance as well.
Yes.
Correct. Alright, so.
Do an order, do a motion for both.
Motion.
Motion for both to.
Sorry. Mike, does the fee have to be in the municipal land use fee schedule? Or could it be part of the municipal fee ordinance? So, if they were to adjust that throughout the year, they can do that. Or, or does it have to be in chapter one oh two?
I think it has to be on chapter one oh two, uh, because it's land use.
Okay.
And that, we can certainly look at that, but I, I think to cover this right now would be just the zoning permit fee. Would cover the whole process.
Yeah. And that zoning permit fee is in our land use section, correct?
So, we'd have to touch the, that fee schedule at this moment.
Yeah, I'd make a motion with, you know, the discussion we had to send it, you know, my, my concern is with the fence, I don't want to delay that one anymore. I know there's residents waiting a couple of months at this point. So, I'd like to get that up to council as a recommendation, so. I don't know, do we have to do them separately, or can we do them both?
You can do them both, and, you know, again, it's just authorizing him to send the draft ordinances as revised based upon a discussion tonight. Both the fence and the ARB amendments to council for their review and, uh, hopefully introduction. And again, we'll see them back before us.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. Thank you, Kara.
Do we need a roll call for this?
Uh, I know the names. Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Okay, um, I have no comments at this time. I am going to open up the meeting to the public for any comments. Hearing none, I will close public session. Are we going back into executive?
No.
Okay, I don't know.
There's no need.
Thank you. Alright, uh, motion ahead.
A question. A few weeks ago, we had something from Raritan, I guess it was with the, the, the three towns. They sent us something about changing intersection on, on Route two oh two, but we never discussed it, and I'm just curious about it.
The regional center?
Regional center. They, the Raritan sent us something that they're doing, some sort of changes at first.
That was, I think, a.
Just handle change.
No, it was an example of something.
This was an example that Mike gave us about an ordinance and how.
Oh, I thought they were doing something.
No, 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 it was, it was an example. I, I did the same thing at that meeting and I had to ask Mike.
Never mind.
Alright, uh, motion to adjourn.
So, I, I just, sorry.
Whoops, sorry.
I apologize. I ju, I did just need two items of direction. One is the, so the Board of Education, I did speak with them. I know at the last meeting where the board was presenting their, their, uh, drawings, I shouldn't say their drawings, their vision prior to the referendum being issued in March, that, that is, um, those are courtesy reviews, which the borough actually pays for. And I guess my question to the board would be, is it really necessary to have them come back before the referendum?
I would think on the remaining items, yes.
I see, I disagree. It's up to them.
You don't think so?
It's up to them. It's, they, they're gonna be doing a whole courtesy review for the entire public on these, these referendums. And obviously, all, all it really is, is a, a footprint. It's not even a review of a, a site plan. So, so we're reviewing a footprint that may or may not happen.
Correct, and, and the changes from pending referendum, items, one item passes, another one doesn't, where the money shifts. Then they're gonna have to come in for a courtesy review at that time.
I mean, if they're, if we're not breaking any current regulations that they have to, then.
Yeah, because I think the board last meeting, there was some expectation, I guess, maybe, or said that they would come in prior to the referendum. But, but in speaking with them, because they, they were actually scheduled to come back tonight, but again, they were just gonna show you a footprint. They, the plans aren't established, the, the referendum, obviously, that, that's an approval that would allow them to move forward. And I, I, I was just concerned that they're gonna come in with five applications. While your agenda today is not busy, it's going to get busy. And, and more importantly, um, you know, we're financing tho, tho, those reviews.
Yeah, my thinking is, is let them, let them vet their concept as they see fit with the public as opposed to, and, and once they have a plan, that's when they can come.
Alright, that's what my question was. So, they would still come in, but we're just waiting for them to.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Think a real plan before, rather, rather than they think I might want to do this, I might want to do that.
Yeah.
I, I have a lot of great ideas of things I want to do, I don't want it.
No, I was just confused on that, that piece. And yes, I do agree with that.
Yeah, my note said that they're gonna come back with fully engineered site plans, and I think the intention of that was they're not gonna do fully engineered site plans until they have the referendum and have guidance.
Yeah.
Alright, nope, that makes sense then.
So, they'll be off your agenda. And then the issuance of a twenty twenty-five RFPs, so the board has professionals that, that annually get appointed. So, I mean, you could take that up in the executive session of how, and, and the only reason is because as the clerk of municipality, I usually do them for the board as well. And we'll be talking about that in, in the council meeting, um, how they want to proceed. So, I think it, we just need, I'll just need some direction as to how the board wants to proceed, whether they want to go through a, a process or, or, or they're, they're looking to seek, uh, existing appointments and so forth. So, I just need some future direction on that.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
How about that?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.